You're set? Okay. I'd like to call the city council meeting for November 3rd to order, please. Could I have a roll call?
Mayor Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Swanson?
Here.
And Councilmember Colback?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. If you're able, please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Is there any additions, changes, or deletions? And Stephanie, we did have an addition, didn't we?
One addition. Resolution number 2025-69. We could add that under new business, item K.
Item K. Under new business. And you've got, okay, I've got it right here on this one. Okay. All right. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change under new business, resolution 2025-69.
I move we accept the agenda with the change.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion questions?
Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries.
The consent agenda, that contains the following items for approval. The October 20th, 25 regular meeting minutes, the payment of claims and listing of bills. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Community concerns. Stephanie, do we have anyone here for community concerns?
I'll check, but I don't think so.
Okay. Community concerns is different than the public hearing, so.
We do not.
We do not. Okay. Well, we'll move on to the public hearing then. Public hearing to consider making street and utility improvements on Second Avenue Southwest from 10th Street Southwest to 7th Street Southwest, pursuant to Minnesota statute 429-011 to 429.11. The area proposed to be assessed for such improvements is all adjacent parcels. The estimated cost of the improvements is $2,193,391.20. This public hearing allows the public to comment on the proposed street and utility improvement project planned for Second Avenue Southwest from 10th Street Southwest to 7th Street Southwest. Each property owner has been sent a letter with an estimated cost that could be assessed to their property if the council chooses to move forward with the project. Engineering Winter will be present to speak about the improvements being made, and the preliminary assessment role is provided in the council packets for everyone up here. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. So our meeting, our public meeting is open, and this would give... Travis, if you would like to start the public meeting with your presentation, and then we'll have time for people to comment after that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and members of the public in attendance. So as stated, this is an improvement hearing for Second Avenue Southwest. This is the first of two hearings that are required by law under state statute 429. We will present the project's scope and impacts, discuss proposed assessments and project schedule, and then we'll give an opportunity for public input and discussion. And that will allow adequate time to make plans for those improvements. This general location map shows the area in question. Essentially, is Second Avenue from Highway 30 continuing south to 10th Street. It includes streets, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main, sewer and water services, as well as sidewalks, driveways, curb and gutter. The goals of this project are to improve the street surface conditions, reduce INI, that's inflow and infiltration of the sanitary sewer, increase reliability of the water system, which to do that will include replacement of the deteriorating infrastructure that is below ground. This will improve reliability and decrease maintenance costs over time. And then will as well improve drainage conditions in the area. So what we're proposing is full reconstruction of the street, which includes new base, curb and gutter, driveways, aprons, storm sewer mains, catch basins, intakes, manholes, sanitary main and manholes as well, water lines to the property line or further as needed if there are some lead services that are found or things of that nature that's not to code. We'll replace the pipes, the wat, the hydrants, the valves, and all the plittings for the water mains. There'll also be concrete sidewalk work replacing what's in place there. This picture depicts the way the infrastructure is put together in a cross-section view. As you can see, some of the gray structures, those are the manholes for the sanitary sewer and storm sewer. The green is where the pipes go for sanitary sewer with the service pipe to the residence. Blue is walk main, service to residents, and then the storm sewer, which has the catch basins that obtain the water draining in the curb and bring it into the storm mains to get it away. So all that is part of what you don't see below the surface of the road. Probable schedule, assuming everything moves forward and funding is allocated for the project. We would have the hearing tonight. We would look to approve plans in February. We would project a bid opening in March with consideration for award in April, and then construction start potentially in May. And our assumption would be that we would get the project done during one construction season, and then the following fall, which would at the earliest be October of 2027, we would have the assessment hearing, which is the second of the two hearings that were discussed. The schedule could slide a year or more depending on if funding is available for it. So assessments, right now, what you were sent was based on the initial estimate. The actual assessment will be done at the end of the project. It'll be based on actual costs. You'll get another notice mailed before that second hearing. Hearing date, which we've discussed, as it's currently scheduled, is 27. If there is an objection to that amount, you can give that in writing at that time. And as long as that is filed before the, before the public hearing ends for the assessment hearing, you have the opportunity to object to the assessment. So the city's assessment policy, which was updated last year, includes 70% of the street-related items to be assessed. City covers 70% of that. The way it's divvied up is the amount of linear footage of street that's in front of your property, and that gets allocated amongst all properties along there. So it's, you know, if you own 100 feet, we come up with a rate per foot, and then you would be charged for that footage. Storm sewer is 100% paid by the city, as well as water and sanitary sewer, also 100% city costs. The only cost for water and sewer that may come back, and that would be if you agree to it, is if we find substandard pipes, the clay tile sanitary that is places is not considered to be meeting code, we talk to you about replacing it, otherwise it can be done here on outside of the project. Completely up to you as well. Some of the houses in this neighborhood have been speculated to have water service pipes, either in the right-of-way or on the public, private property. So that's another item that we would discuss with you at the time of construction. So estimated costs, as it was mentioned, just under 2.2 million. This is for streets, 1.25 approximately. Small amount storm sewer, just over 100,000. And then the balance, 366,000 sanitary and 460,000 water to comprise the project. I should mention the cost for the street is estimated using six inches of concrete, which is what we've done on our past number of projects for the city. There is an opportunity to defer assessments in the future after they are levied. This will be brought up at the next hearing that we were talking about in 2027. So either senior citizens over age 65 or active-duty military. As it's noted there, there are a few other criteria in them being one. That is not an eternal deferment. It's only until the hardship is removed. So they do become due upon death or sale of the property, and interest will accrue during the deferment period. So some impacts that will be noticed to properties. Like I mentioned, driveways will be replaced. If they're concrete now, we will replace with concrete up to the right-of-way. There are opportunities at times for the homeowner to arrange to have extra driveway work done that can be discussed during construction. Other things that could be going on in the neighborhood with these projects are private utility companies, the gas, the telephone, internet, electric, they could choose to relocate some of their utilities, either ahead of or in conjunction with the city's work. There are likely to be tree removals, although it's unfortunate. Those are usually related to utility construction. We try and save trees where possible. However, a lot of times in these neighborhoods, as part of a project, we do look at the age of the tree and the condition. Obviously, ashore is a concern in this area, although it's probably not here right now. We're definitely taking that consideration when we're looking at trees to take out. There are going to be times during construction when driveways are not accessible. We will work with homeowners to give notice and let you know when that's going to happen and what the duration will be. I'll try to work with you to either find ways to park in alleys or on side streets. If there are special access concerns, you let us know. We will make accommodations for those cases. There could be some utility interruptions, particularly to water. It'll be for short periods of time, part of the day, when they start doing construction. Typically, we set up a temporary water line, which is a small pipe that is put above ground. That does allow us to feed you, feed you from that above-ground source while the underneath pipes are being replaced. Another thing to think about, or we think about, is mail delivery. If there are mailboxes that need to be temporarily relocated, the contractor will take care of that. Garbage service will be essentially uninterrupted to residents. The contractor will take the bins and move them to a central site, have it collected, and then they will return them to your property. One thing I was going to mention with the funding, we have applied for low-interest loan grants through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, which has assisted in funding the last few projects for town. We have been very successful in getting a portion of the projects covered in grant monies. We're going to be capitalizing on that again. There has been, with everything going on in the government, there have been some delays on announcing what list of projects are fundable this year. We're still waiting for that information, but the way this has historically worked, if you miss the funding cutoff one year, you get moved to the top of the list the following year. It's not a matter of if, it's when, and, you know, this obviously is a very high priority area, given the condition of the utilities, water being over 70 years old, same as sewer, and the street condition is very poor shape, as I'm sure you're aware. That's it. I guess at this time, it'd be appropriate to take public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you, Travis. And anyone that would like to speak, we'll just start out in the first row. And you don't have to, but you certainly are welcome to. So if you'd like to start out, and we'll just kind of follow along, make sure everybody's got a chance to speak. So go ahead, come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and let us know what you're thinking.
My name is Lee Blum. We live at 818 Second Avenue Southwest. I was curious who is going to be the contractor of this project.
We can't answer that question right now, but go ahead, Travis. You can explain it better than I can.
Yeah, so the way this works is from here, we will develop plans and specifications that spell out the work to be done. Because the costs are estimated to be over $175,000, the city is required to take public bids. So that's where that process would happen, that March timeframe next year, if everything moves through. And then we would know the contractor at that time.
Okay. Well, we can start over here. Arlene?
That's my speaker.
Okay.
It's meant for your driveway that you're going to tear up.
Just go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Gene Blum, dial 825 Second Avenue Southwest.
Thank you.
Up to the property line, does that mean beyond the
Boulevard?
Boulevard, yeah. The Boulevard, or does that, because I imagine it'll tear up across the Boulevard and the sidewalk?
Yes, boulevards will be disturbed and restored. Driveway replacements will be just beyond
Again, Steve.
Just beyond the sidewalk, sidewalk is approximately where the property line would be located.
These estimates that we got, does that include the clay tile sewer that runs up to our house, or does that just run to the property line also?
This would replace to the property line if further investigation shows it to be clay tile from there going forward. We would come to you with an estimate of what that cost would be.
I'm positive that most of the houses up that way need to be replaced.
Yeah. We've been, I mean, this is just an estimate based on the last project, but we were seeing costs around $2,500.
And we do have a program for that available. Stephanie, if you want to just clarify that program?
We do. So you'd either, if you wanted to, you could choose to tie in with this project. Like Travis said, it might be a little bit lower cost to try, tied in with the project and do it that way and have it assessed on your taxes. Or if you wanted to go through our city loan program, you could do that as well and assess it to your taxes over seven years at 0% interest, so.
Another thing, around my house, there are four houses down from each house. It varies from $11,300, which is my house, to $5,700. What is the difference? My frontage is 62 feet. And most of the other ones are 50?
Yeah, that's, that's the main difference, or that's, that's the difference that's shown in the preliminary numbers, was it's how much footage you have, but in the street.
Yeah, 62 feet, does it? It's a lot more than the, someone that has 50 feet at 5,400 or 100 feet at 5,700, you know?
We can double-check the numbers, but generally, that's how we estimate it. You know, if, if we made a mistake, we'll review it.
Sounds to me like you made a mistake. Please, double-check.
Okay, if you think you've
People are moving on a pipe stone too, because the taxes and assessments are just, just fricking outrageous in the city, you know? And Wedgerton has a big problem with that too now, because they had a lot of construction and stuff going on, but for the last many years, pipe stone is just... And I don't know why it is, you know, people get the whole pipe stones name, and they says, well, we're going to do it to them. That way it sounds like they did that. My feeling is they did that with the schools and with everything else around here. You know? And I agree that we have to have the road redone, and I agree that some of these projects could be looked at a little bit better before they give somebody a bid and say, go ahead. Because a lot of, I don't know, what percentage of people at Pipestone are over 65, you know? And a lot of them are on a fixed income, and if their social security is $1,800 a month, you know? $11,000, how many months do I got to save up for that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, go ahead, sir.
My name is Chris Miller. I live at 203 10th Street Southwest. It's the corner lot there. The 10th Street project was done, I was assessed in 2023, at a cost of $9,900. And that was for approximately 158 lineal feet of street frontage. And I just got this new one in the mail for $7,500 is the proposed assessment for approximately 62 lineal feet. I mean, when you do the math on it, if you take the, I obviously understand the inflation has gone up, but if you do the math on it per lineal foot, the, based off of the last project, it would be around $3,100 compared to $7,500. Is there, what constitutes the increase in pricing for this project versus the 10th Street project?
Well, I would get, you know, I would say that inflation is a big factor. And at this stage of the game, we estimate costs. We try to, try to estimate high. You know, assuming that it's easier to accept a price, an assessment going in on as opposed to going up. Corner lots are looked at a little bit differently. It's short side or, you know, proportion of the long side. But we can review what this assessment was. We also do, with the city's new policy, have some flexibility to review individual assessments to make sure they don't exceed the value that's added by the improvement to the property.
This is my side yard, pretty much, and the 10th Street project did wrap around the corner too, so based off of the construction limits of the Second Street or Second Ave project, it's not a true 62-foot.
Yep. And we would double-check that when we go through and finalize everything, but because we wouldn't, we wouldn't count the, what was already done. So we would look at that to make sure. Sometimes we take a pretty broad brush stroke at the preliminary phase and just use the footage that's posted versus when we prepare the final assessment role, we make sure that the, yet only the amount that was improved is counted. So we will review it.
And then another, another question I have, the, I do work in the construction field by trade, and I've never once seen a project come in under budget by any means. And will that, will that increase the assessment if it does come in over budget? I know you said you, you overestimate in hopes that it goes down, but if it goes up, then what?
Right. And it's, goes down, goes up, the assessments are based on the final numbers. I will say, other than, you know, some of the increases due to inflation that are beyond my control, we do try to base our costs initially off of past projects, giving some reasonable inflation. However, once, once the bids come in, in the last 10 years, I cannot say we've had a project come in over budget after we've had the design and done.
Inflation doesn't bring it up 150%. That's where, that's where my, my main gripe is towards the, the cost of the assessment based off of the previous project two years ago to today.
Yep. And like I say, we can, we can verify that. There were a few years of very heavy inflation in the construction industry that happened. COVID and after.
Yeah, it was 2020, 2021.
Yep. Yeah, our, our design has not changed in how we are completing these projects, so we do try to give the most economical, long-term solution. But we review and make sure we're not, we're doing everything correctly for your assessment.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, next? Oh, anybody else in the second row? Okay. Yep, go ahead, sir.
My name's James Vaughn, 916 Second Avenue. I probably have the most property, as I have two lots. It is quite a bit of what I've got coming at me. However, in the past two years, I've requested, you know, to get a new driveway, as mine is bad. And I was denied. I was denied because of this project, that they would be doing this, and they said, wait, as I tried to get a wider apron, as where my driveway is and where the neighbor is, when he parks in front of my driveway, it's very difficult for us to get out. So I was told, you know, to wait for this project to get the apron widened and everything else, because they're going to destroy the sidewalks and everything else. With that being said, widening the apron, where do I go? Who do I talk to, or?
I can make sure that gets
Okay, okay, because I think right now it's at the 10-foot mark or something like that, but, you know, we would need a double driveway to combat with our neighbors across the street. The second thing I had was the boulevard space. Are we taking out boulevard space to widen the road any? Because I believe it was done on 10th Avenue over there, or 10th Street, I think. So we would be losing, excuse me, a little bit of boulevard there.
Yeah, as it's proposed, and the street's currently 30 feet wide. The city's standard residential section has been 36 feet in recent years. Basically, that would be pretty far.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the clean out to the houses and everything, I was told to wait until we found out when the projects and everything was, was going on. The next thing is, is I guess, do we just need to contact with our neighbors when we park along the side streets and everything?
Yeah, well, there'll be some information that comes out closer to when construction will be starting, and contractor will put notice out, we'll send out, usually the, before we start construction, we send a mailed notice out. We give an opportunity to sign up for weekly updates from a website or a mailing list we use. So you'll get emailed or texted out. On things like that, restrictions, those type of things.
I think that would be it for me. Mail delivery, I guess we just need to work that out with the post office or?
We'll take care of that for you.
Okay.
And let you know, if there's a, if you have a mailbox there, generally, those get temporarily relocated in a bank at some nearby location.
Okay.
And the contractor coordinates with the postmaster.
So, James?
Yes.
Travis Winter, Bolton and Mink Engineering. You don't hear from him if and when the project's going on. Make sure you contact him and
Yeah, I'll do that.
Get those things taken care of.
Yep.
The way you want them done.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Gene? Seconds are okay.
Have you ever thought about looking down the street with the, and tearing up the side with the least amount of trees instead of taking eight foot or six foot off each side?
Well, it'd be, I mean, maybe three foot off the side. We're trying to center it in the right of way, so. Each, so, so that everybody's getting an equal boulevard.
But I mean, three feet from the side.
Yeah.
Tearing up a lot of trees on both sides.
Yeah. It's definitely a balancing act. When you get narrower than 36, it feels very tight if you got cars parking on both sides, so.
I'm used to it, it's been there 30 years, so I don't know. Yeah, I was just wondering if anybody had ever considered that. Yeah, I was just wondering if you, anybody had ever considered that? It'd probably cut down expenses.
Sure. Good point.
Anyone else have any information or questions on the, for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I've got trees like right up to the sidewalk. And been waiting to get rid of them for a while, I'll just put it off. Is that something they're going to take care of? Okay, because it's like right at the sidewalk.
What side of the sidewalk?
Mine.
Boulevard side or your side?
It's in, it, it, yes, it's there. It touches sidewalk.
Yeah, if they're, if it's right on the right of way, usually we'll, it's kind of a case by case basis. Personally, I would rather protect the new sidewalk and.
Right, me too. I want to get rid of them, but I split a tree with the neighbor, so it's fifty-fifty. They don't really care, you know, what I do. But, yeah, I just didn't know.
Yep, when, when they're on the right of way, we would generally look at it as being city's responsibility
Sure.
to address if need be with the project.
Sure, sure. The other thing was like the trees in the boulevard, like the people across the road from me have small trees, little maples, whatever it is. Are y'all planning to do something like that? Putting them back in there or kind of beautify the, the boulevard a little bit?
Yeah, so the street department does budget some replacements for the city, and we usually target the project areas and work with who wants another tree after
Okay.
job is done.
Okay, okay, and then it's, I guess it's a local landscaper that's going to be re-drilling the, the grass in there. Because the last time they, they done some work on my house, it was dandelions. That's all it was. You spend a lot of money on yards. You don't want dandelions back in there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, that's what we get the most complaints on is first year of grass.
Yep.
But if you keep mowed and keep.
Yep.
We've had some very nice looking lawns, because we do put a straw netting over it.
Erosion net.
Yeah, just so it, it helps to keep the moisture in and really helps to get it going. But there's weeds everywhere. Keep mowed, the grass takes over.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Gene? Well, we can't hear you, and just for the record, we gotta have you up there at the microphone. Okay.
How about the sump lines from your house run underneath the sidewalks to the street? Is that our, our replacement cost, or is the, they gonna, you gonna have to fix those also?
We will take care of that. What we've been doing with the projects is put a connection to the underdrain pipes, wanting to keep the road subgrade dry, we'll run that up so the sump pumps don't drain to the street anymore.
Okay.
So they will, and be underground, so they don't have to dump out and make this mess in the street.
But after it's all, the project's done, you'll fix it to run out into the street?
We'll put a connection past the sidewalk. If yours is underground now, we'll connect it here, otherwise we'll give you the opportunity to connect to it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got a question.
That's why we have to hear it. You're good.
Hi, you're in Blom and I live at eight one eight Second Avenue Southwest, and you're going to be taking out the whole sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the median will be smaller, or, or will the sidewalk be moved into the personal property then? How does that go?
It, it will not be beyond the right of way. I mean, usually we put the, you know, the, imagine the sidewalk right now is, is maybe a foot off the right of way. That's typically how it is. Sometimes it's uptight. We usually, we like to leave about a foot. Sidewalk being in the right of way.
But she's asking, she wouldn't lose any personal property?
No.
The sidewalk's not going to come closer to your house. No, no, it's going to stay where it's at or be out a little further.
The median will be smaller.
Well, it, it just depends on how it's designed likely, yeah.
Yeah, if you're going to take three feet off, yeah, okay, thank you. What about? Well, we're, we got two lots. Is that what you're saying, hon? Why don't you say it? I don't know what you are talking about.
Yeah, no. Residents, what we've got there? We assess for both.
Yeah. Right?
We've, we've looked at those, and if it's not a buildable lot, doesn't have utilities to it, we've taken, said it's, it's considered a part of the main, main lot and.
You got to assess for both equally, the same amount for both lots, and they're not the same.
We've had an opportunity to, to, to limit the total assessment to make sure it doesn't exceed the value. Obviously, an extra lot that's not buildable, doesn't add a lot of value, so we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Anyone else?
So who do I contact to discuss the actual assessment itself?
You can call me.
Okay, you have a business card?
Be happy to review it, Mattia. And if anybody needs to get ahold of me, contact City Hall and they'll give you my number.
Okay. All right, anyone else from the audience? Any comments, questions from the council? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, say it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you. Get back to find my place here, okay. Next up is reports from Chamber of Commerce.
Erica.
Oh, you can sit around if you want to.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Keep, skip.
What's that?
Thanks for keeping it.
Thanks, Lee.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Erica, go ahead. Thank you.
All right, well, first of all, for the record, my name's Erica Volker. I'm the executive director of the Pipestone Area Chamber and Tourism. Firstly, just like to say thank you for allowing me to appear before you one meeting late, or one meeting in the future, which is today, and we had a prior commitment, and so I couldn't make the last, the last meeting. The last meeting I was at was on July twenty-first, so given the hour, I'm just going to power through a few little numbers on some past events and then highlight some of our upcoming things. Previous, since I was last here at the end of July, we held our, our annual Pipestone Area Chamber through our Ed Committee, our youth ribbon auction, and that was as part of the fair. Of course, the fair went great, but our particular event is the youth ribbon auction, supporting our youth in ag and the future of that through, which also provides direct support for Pipestone County four H, for Pipestone FFA program, as well as Edgerton FFA program. And this year, we raised our third, it was our third highest year of raising funds for those youth in ag, and that was at a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred. So we're very happy with that and very thankful to all of the donors. In addition to various things that are funded in terms of them going to, you know, state and nationals, as well as different competitions, and throughout the entire year, we also, this is the fifth year that we've exclusively funded all of the live streaming of Pipestone County Fair, which serves not only to help parents who are working be able to see their youth participating, but also relatives out of state, as well as it's used as an educational tool since it's archived, where the youth can review themselves before they compete at higher levels or in future years to see how they've performed and showed their, shown their animals, et cetera, so. And we, we hire Christensen Broadcasting to do that, and so that's a great, a great service, so thanks to all the donors who support that. Then we held our eighth annual kids fishing derby, water slides, and all community dinner. We served a three hundred and fifty meals. We had a hundred and twenty kids who were registered to fish. We caught well over two hundred fish. So thanks to all of those efforts for restocking, they're getting larger and more, and, and more plentiful. So, so that was great. And then all the many kids as well that didn't fish and just went for the water slides, so that's, that's always a fun event. And we have lots of great sponsors there as well. Then for, we had a couple of car cruisers since the last time we were here. One held in Hatfield with a live band, and that, we had over seventy cars. That was the same night as Pipestone County Relay for Life, so we were happy with that, because that obviously splits up a lot of people on two big events. But that was a great event, and then our final one was a record breaker. We had well over a hundred cars on September on nine eleven. And this was the second year that the chamber opened up that event as a fundraiser to the Pipestone Veterans Memorial Committee for a meal fundraiser this year, through that meal and some hats that were sold, et cetera. They raised, or we raised, I should say, I'm on that committee as well, two thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is more than double our twenty-twenty-four event. So that was a really great time, and Mylan Ray, that was his last, he tells me that was his last chamber car cruising that he's doing, so that was a, that was a big draw as well, people from all over the area. Then for about six weeks, we were pumpkin farmers, so thanks to the Pipestone Development Corporation for allowing us the use of their land and then all of their assistance, as well as all of our chamber staff and volunteers who then harvested and weeded and all of that, and selling our pumpkins. All of those funds that are raised through that, we had businesses, groups, youth groups, and then individuals who all purchased those, and then we reinvest a hundred percent of that back in all of our events that we do year round. One of those events is the fall decorating contest, and we'll be announcing those winners this week. We had about twenty of those, about ten in each, give or take, in the business and nonprofit division, as well as about ten in the residential, and we'll be awarding first, second, and third place here this week, so just check our Facebook and your chamber newsletter, and we're going to send it to the paper too. The, in front of you, you have the Pipestone Veterans Memorial Gala. So this was the first time we held this fundraising event. That was on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. Our chamber's responsibility was through some of the promotion and the program in front of you, as well as the silent auction, and we have an incredibly generous community. So we had ninety-six amazing silent auction items. And we'll be getting out some information about everything that was raised after our committee hasn't had a chance to meet yet. But that was great. We had about a hundred and forty-five attendees. We had eight business table sponsors, three individual table sponsors. You can see those on the back and a great program, so a lot of veterans came up, have come into the chamber or came up to me at the end of the evening at the conclusion of that, and we're, are hoping that we make it an annual event. Kind of also served to teach a little bit of, sort of what would be not at the same formality as like a military ball, but some of those same types of traditions, explaining the POW table, some of those symbols and significance, and a nice kind of prelude into Veterans Day. And check our, our Facebook page, because there are a lot of events where veterans can eat free around town, be that at Coburn's, just recently at the Pancake, breakfast at St. Leo's through the Catholic Daughters. Let's see, Coburn's Pizza, this is on Veterans Day, Coburn's Pizza Ranch. I know I'm forgetting one. Oh, the, the omelet breakfast, which will be this upcoming Sunday. So lots of ways to kind of just show recognition for, for our veterans. And also there at the gala, Kristi Appo, who's our chair, updated, and I don't remember the exact figure, maybe Verdine does, but I know there's well over two hundred names of Pipestone County veterans who are already reserved to be honored through, specifically by name through that. There, you still have time to do that, so if you're interested, just contact the chamber or one of the committee members, and we can help you get information about that. The rural, rural, it's hard to say, Rural Child Care Innovation Program, we held a chamber ribbon cutting on, just recently, on October thirtieth for the city of Pipestone's EDH Childcare Business Incubator Space. We'll be posting those pictures pretty quickly. That is available, so if you know someone that wants to go into childcare, it needs to be a new childcare, but that's going to, once that is filled, that will open up another and create another about ten to fourteen spots, depending on the age of the kids and how many staff would be involved. So if you're interested, contact Justin Schorer with the EDA. That was, we got some assistance, not only through the city, but then also as well as from Southwest Initiative Foundation, and that was one of the particular projects of the Facilities Task Force, their facilities committee as part of the RCCIP. Additionally, with the RCCIP, we had our Community Solution Action Plan, which was held just after that ribbon cutting in open house on October thirtieth, so just recently at Stone House. There's probably about, I'm going to guess, maybe twelve to fifteen folks there. There were updates that were given from each of the task force committees, kind of a recap of what has been accomplished of the five kind of key areas of goals, how we want to move forward, and then also an announcement of the fundraising option through the Pipestone Area Community Foundation, and so there's been a separate fund set up for, for businesses or individuals who want to support efforts towards increasing the number of childcare spaces, as would be, you know, a buttress to our overall workforce. So that's, so that's exciting as well. And then they also provided a report up to, it's quite an extensive report, and we'll be attaching that in our chamber newsletter, and I'm sure the city has a copy, and the EDA has copies of that available as well for folks who are interested. Just recently, we held on last Friday our eleventh annual trunk-or-treat event, and despite the very cold weather and very cold feet that I had, there, we still had, I'm going to guess, between kind of reports of some folks I've talked to, between about nine hundred to a thousand kids. I wasn't worried. When you're giving out free candy, kids are coming, so they love it. It's, it's convincing some of the parents sometimes about that. We also are getting more and more pets, so I heard several participants say, I think we're going to bring pet treats too, so, so that's a growing, a growing group of attendees as well, so that's always fun. They're always in costume and dogs, cats, what have you. The, we had thirty-four participants in that, and those are across the board, from local businesses, churches, youth groups, or, or teams, or clubs, nonprofits, and then adult, you know, service-type clubs as well. I'll announce who the winners are here, and we haven't even posted these, but the twenty-twenty-five Spooky Spirit Award winner, that is the overall winner, was Guermin's Clothing Company for their great portrayal of Kiss with their rest in peace to the recently departed guitarist Ace Frehley, so that was a popular hit, and they did an awesome job. Nice tie-in too with Guermin's being one of our local fashion places with, which of course, they don't quite carry the Kiss fashions, but, but those, those gals were rocking it. So then our twenty-twenty-five Best Trunk for Business Division was First Farmers and Merchants Bank for Wicked. And as you know, if you are someone who has folks in your household with Wicked, Wicked, I don't know what it's called, but Wicked Two, the second one is coming out very soon, so that was very timely, and they did a great job. And our twenty-twenty-five Best Trunk Nonprofit Division was the Pipestone Area Arrows Marching Band, and they had a pick-or-treat haunted trailer where the kids could actually pick Frankenstein's nose and get the candy out of it, and that was a big hit. Kind of gross, but very fun. They liked it, so. And then at home, I just wanted to comment, we also had several trick-or-treaters in our neighborhood on foot and/or chauffeured by car. So just remember, if you like to have them at your home, just, you know, make sure you decorate, leave your light on, and they will come. So we were fresh out of candy, and we did the teal bucket for the allergy folks, and all those treats were gone too. Just, I realize I'm over time, so I'm just going to highlight a couple quick things with the council's permission. Just that we also held on, last week on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, our Connecting Businesses and Community, that CBC program that the chamber is partnering with the EDA, and with the assistance of University of Minnesota Extension, we held a training with our interviewers, and we've already started some of those interviews. Look for information, more information on, through, through Facebook, we're also going to put it in our newsletter and on our website as well in terms of what that'll look like. But essentially, if you're a business, we're going to be contacting you to have interviews, and please, please participate. And so we'll be sending around groups of interviewers, local interviewers, to work on that project, so that, and we've already done a few already, so that project has started. Of course, the Chamber Chili Cook-off is, is coming up. That is our, one of our largest fundraisers for the chamber. It is Thursday, November twentieth at five o'clock. Snow day is the very next day, and it is Thursday Night Live, so that we don't get sued, but it's your favorite, you know, SNL. Um, but it's your favorite, you know, um, SNL or what we're going to call TNL, um, comedy skits of any time from the last 50 years. We have 13 teams, yep, already signed up. They are listed at pipestorminnesota.com with their themes. First come, first served for those themes. And then we're also soliciting, um, silent auction donations. So if you're interested in supporting that, um, please just give us a call. Uh, $12 adults, $5 kids, zero to four free and everyone's welcome. And even if you don't like chili, I think it's well worth going to. It's a great silent auction, great cause. It's right before the holidays. Um, but also just our teams go way out. I mean, that's why we need to limit it to 16 is just by space and their creativity is amazing and it's a really fun time. And it's held at the country club, so you can support them as well by having some, um, beverages. Uh, Shop Small Saturday will be November 29th. Um, one comment about that, normally that's kind of at the same time as Lights, uh, Lights at the Lodge. Just so people are aware, Lights at the Lodge has moved up one week. So they will be, their opening night will be the 22nd, which is that Saturday. And that is, um, I'm told by the committee to make it warmer for people to decorate. So it'll just be one more year, uh, one more year, one more week of festivities. It will still go through January 1st, but that was kind of the thought behind it is, is because it does, it, it's amazing what one week will do there. Um, and then my, um, later I have, uh, two requests regarding our Christmas, um, our Christmas requests. So we will be holding our Second Annual Mary and Brightnight Lighted Holiday Parade on Friday, the 5th. And also our Santa Comes to Santa and Mrs. Claus Comes to Pipestone Event on Saturday, uh, December 6th. Um, again at City Hall this year, uh, with your permission and approval of those. Um, and, uh, along with the 4H ambassadors for their Santa's Workshop, Make and Take, Take Crafts. And then, uh, through the chamber, um, we also will be distributing, Santa will have his bookshop again. That went over very well, um, and we've written some grants. So thank you to United Way, to Pipestone Area Community Foundation, and also to Sioux Valley Energy, as well as anyone who bought pumpkins, because all of those funds go back in. And each child who visits, whether they're a sibling or whatnot, um, older siblings as well. We have books available, so each child takes home, um, a book that they will have over, um, winter vacation. And then of course, um, very, uh, timely right now, especially, uh, the Pipestone County Christmas Care Program. Um, those links to register are not up there yet, but we're already getting, um, requests about, um, kind of information about that. So those will be available on pipestorminnesota.com. We'll also put them on Facebook, both on the chamber and, and the Kiwanis, um, Facebook pages, as well as, uh, in our, in our newsletter and, um, it starts great about printing that as well. We don't have those quite ready to go yet, but they will be coming. And Distribution Day for folks to mark is Saturday, December 13th, same time, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That is our holiday meal tote for any resident of Pipestone County. Regardless of whether you have children or not, if you need some extra financial assistance and that will help you, then please do register for that. There'll be a separate link just for meal only. If you'd like a meal and you have children under 12 and you're a Pipestone County resident, then there's a, there'll be a separate link. So just look for either meal only, um, food tote only, or, um, or food and toys. Um, and then of course, um, I'm over time as usual, but not getting better. Uh, the, uh, there's lots of holiday programs, so please do support those. There's tons available, um, with, uh, at the Benders Community Library. Um, I think there's three or four performances between now and the, um, the end of the year, through the Pipestone Performing Arts Center, between Callie Matt Players, um, has a couple, um, the, uh, Al Opeland Singers, of course, with their annual holiday show. There's going to be a Michael Buble tribute, um, the Legion as well have their dueling duos. Um, the museum has various programs as well. And then, uh, starting with, of course, Pinup Girls, which starts this week by the Callie Matt Players. And that'll be a nice tie-in for Veterans Day. So if you have a veteran, take them, that's kind of like exactly what it sounds like, kind of that pinup girl. And it'll be sort of military with, um, lots of familiar songs and kind of some letters. And, and, uh, if you know a veteran, that'd be a great thing to take them to as well. So that is what I have.
Well, thank you, Eric. I appreciate your work for the city of Pipestone and, uh, a lot coming up. And this is a busy time of year and so lots of exciting things to be doing coming up. So thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is Engineering, Pickleball Court, A Request Number Three and Four. And, uh, Travis, you have an update on that for us?
Yeah. So the, the contractor was finally able to get their, their sub in to, to do some repair work that was identified as being, um, out of compliance with the, uh, the service of the courts. Um, so that's been completed. To my knowledge, that's the end of the punch list for the project. So I guess unless there's anything else to address, um, that would be appropriate to approve the pay requests and close out the project.
Okay.
Did you visit with Beat on that last week or?
Okay.
Yep. Is that, I'm just going to ask you the 472, there's two different models. There's one retaining or, and what's, uh?
The, uh, the 472 was, was one that was initiated previously and then, you know, wasn't paid out at the time, just doing the extra work. So, okay. So this should get us to the contract.
Well, they, they really, uh, smoothed out the spot that was, we were concerned about. Thing is, only thing is the painting's not even close.
Well, and I, you know, I looked at it, I looked at it compared to what, what the previous repairs that were done and, you know, service gets dirty and it's sun faded. So, I'm, I don't disagree with you, Roger.
I guess the total project is, you know, looks pretty good now, but it's just, you know. And, and I told, you know, there was paint, I think, we're supposed to be at the rec center that they had left. So if they had touched up, they, they left the paint, but so anyway, yeah. Anything else? Any other, I guess you were there, you know?
We're really satisfied with everything, so.
Okay. Well, I'd entertain a motion, uh, to approve the pay requests three and four for, uh, Dunick Inc. For $472.05 and pay request number four for Dunick Inc., $12,186.28.
I move we, uh, three favors, uh, three and four for Dunick Inc.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. A Port, A W O S, AWASP, A Request Number One. This pay request application completes payment for the installation of the new AWASP system. Removal of the old AWASP, removal of the old line directional beacon and site restoration. And Bolton and Mink Project Manager Silas Parmar is recommending council approve to pay Werner Brothers Inc. $88,207.50 for this pay request. And, uh, Travis, that is funding through the, uh, state of Minnesota at what, 95% of that?
Correct. So state and federal, 95%, 5% city share.
I'll move, uh, accept pay request number one.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Second Street Southeast, Street and Utility Improvement Pay Request Number Nine and final. And, uh, Travis, so you can provide an update on this project?
Yeah. So there, this is the closeout of that project. There were two blocks that had some cracked pavement that was, uh, was requested to be replaced under the, uh, as a part of the, and the punch list on the project. So that was completed this summer. And, uh, it's recommended to, um, approve this final pay request and close out that contract.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say no, and motion carries. And for the record, that was for $33,069.57. Old Business Resolution 2024-62. And we had a special work session prior to this meeting that lasted for almost an hour, discussing the historic Carnegie Library Building and some of the options that are available there. Um, that grant that we did receive in 2024, I believe it was 2023, 2024, will expire and the end of December of this year, so December 31st of 2025. We can extend that. Uh, there's still some questions and, uh, we know that there's, uh, a lot of expensive work that needs to be done to that building. And, uh, we need to try to find additional funding and, uh, try to keep that building alive in my view. That's my opinion. But, uh, that grant will expire. And so at this point, we need to, uh, decide on what plan we want to move ahead.
Did you say that we need to extend that grant?
Yeah, if we wanted to extend that grant, or at least we can apply to extend it. And, uh, hopefully it would be extended then, and then that would go through 2027, right?
The maximum of 2027.
But that would give us time to, uh, do the projects that need to be done as soon as possible. And I would, just in my opinion, the hole in the roof and, uh, that, uh, wall that's, uh, collapsing, uh, to avoid damage to the neighbor's property. Uh, we need to, uh, shore that up and put some type of temporary, uh, roofing membrane over the hole at least in that roof. And it, it sounds like that could be a solution that's recommended. Uh, providing adequate anchorage of roofing material for restoration period to guard against wind damage and moisture penetration. And that might be acceptable, but it's something that we got to verify. So I'm not talking about a blue tarp up there with a couple of tires on it. Uh, I'm talking about, uh, some type of rubber membrane that's attached there that, uh, will at least stop that moisture from coming in and damaging that building further.
So just for the public's, uh, information, this grant could be used to, to fix the ceiling in that hall.
Correct. Yeah, it, it can, we, we do have information that we can use that funding for the roof and the wall or portions of it. Recommendation that we got from Travis at our last discussion was use the grant for the wall repair and to try to put up some temporary, um, roof membrane to at least stop that water from getting inside the building.
Yeah. So the, the grant funds as they sit now can be used for the wall. If we request an extension at that same time, we could request that that money be used for the roof as well.
Would that hurt our chances for the extension by changing the use of it all? Do we know that?
We don't know that.
Okay. And, and, and that's all things that we can, if we move forward, um, try to get worked out through the state of Minnesota with recommendations on how to proceed the best feasible way.
Yeah. It's already been known that they would rather us fix the roof before we do any significant work to the wall, just to make sure that nobody can extend the wall after we fix it.
Yeah. And that makes perfect sense. They tie in together, so.
But if you re, if you accept the grant though, we need to spend $129,000 of our own also, correct?
Yeah, it's a matching grant. And it has been determined that, or it hasn't been determined. We did, uh, the original project here was to, uh, levy for that funding in '23 for the '24 budget. And there is, according to our, uh, Community Development Director, uh, there should be about a hundred thousand in there for that matching funds that we need, so.
Do we know that for a fact? I mean, I'd like to know that for a fact before I went on with this resolution.
Yeah.
I want to know what funds are.
Yeah.
And what there is.
Yeah.
We can definitely verify that. And as I said in the earlier meeting, if we continue to set aside the $50,000 a year for city buildings, there shouldn't be that money there.
Do you recall getting our investments September 30th, 2025, feet? This is a breakdown, this is a breakdown of the funds that's available to the city of Pipestone.
Is it in there?
It, it doesn't specifically say that.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I wanted to know.
But this is the breakdown, what funds are available. That totaled $6,263,775.78 as of September 30th, 2025. But that, there's a lot of those funds are earmarked.
Can we move forward with the resolution with a stipulation that pending confirmation of that fundage? We can move forward with it or do we need to table it until?
Tell me what you're feeling on that.
You could definitely do that, but in the resolution, it does state that the city has those funds aside, so.
So they are there, correct?
Did you say we clarified that?
I would like to clarify that just because I know when you guys moved ahead with the full scope of work, that costed, what was it, $40,000? So I believe that $40,000 came out of that money that was earmarked for the repairs, which, as I said, if we were getting into 2026, we'll be getting another $50,000 that goes back into that. So we should be fine, but I would like to verify that.
So we've already went backwards another $40,000. And now we're looking at shoring up the wall to the tune of about $36,000. That's just a temporary two-year fix. And that doesn't do anything for the roof. So we know that's going to cost us something too there. And, yeah, it's, it's not getting cheaper, that's for sure. It, it's, uh, but I kind of think that we need to find out exactly what funds are available. And if we table this to a next available meeting, would that give you time to? And, and I'm thinking that we probably should hold a special meeting between now and our regularly scheduled meeting to, uh, because we need to address this. And this, you know.
And this building.
Sooner the better. And we need to address this building too, because we ran out of time. So we should have a special meeting scheduled.
It would be nice to know whether you guys wanted to direct staff to continue to apply for the extension. That type of work's going to take off a little bit too, so.
Well, do you feel comfortable with allowing staff to continue with the application for the extension? I mean, I think if it gets right down to brass tacks, you wouldn't have to accept it.
I think that would probably be appropriate.
I, I would move that.
As long as we're not obligated.
Staff, go ahead for, for the extension.
Okay. Okay. So in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay. Now do you want to?
Moved in seconded. Is there any discussion?
The question was, Scott was, like you said.
I'm just, I'm just.
I'm thinking.
We're under absolutely no obligation to spend one penny. And.
Until we accept the grant. Okay.
All right. Well, my motion is to apply for the extension.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? So then as far as dealing with the, uh, leaking roof and the, uh, wall that's unstable and could damage adjacent property, is there, does the council wish to address those items?
That's, that's a separate, a, a separate part from this resolution though, correct? Because the resolution is just stating about extending the grant.
Well, the resolution is basically acknowledging that we received a grant and that we're committing, you know, our, our match to that grant, so.
So we need to table this resolution until the next council meeting?
So then just keep in mind that. So then just keep in mind that if we're going to apply for an extension, you really need to do it now. Because the grant does end December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Then if you want a special meeting, we should have that sooner than later.
Well, motion was on the floor and seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none or in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no.
This is just for the extension.
Just the extension on.
So all opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so how many ayes do we have? I, I'm a little confused.
So the, correct, this is the motion that we're being made so that we can allow staff to attempt to apply for the extension so that we can figure out the fundage and have another special meeting.
But then you say in order to get the extension, you have to have proof you've got the money on hand to match that, that grant. That's part of the grant process.
That's part of the, this grant is essentially a one-to-one match that the city is required to do.
Yeah, and we did have it at one time apparently, otherwise we would have never received the grant. Question is, do we still have it after a year and a half? So that's something we got to look into. But, well, you said aye, but you said it later on. Well, the question was. All in favor indicate by saying aye, all opposed, say no. And that's through our, our charter. That's how the organization works. And so, we're at, how many ayes?
Let's, okay.
Just so that we understand.
Well, I want to make sure that we're clear that this was for them, for staff to go ahead and look at how much fundage we have and apply for the extension if the fundage is there, correct?
Just to apply for the extension, we need to hold a special meeting and have staff come up with.
I'm confused.
For the extension if we don't know how much money.
You know, the discussion here, it was over and we called the question. So I think we're, we're just muddling this up and what we need to at this point, and.
Can we even apply for the extension if we don't know if we have the money?
So what did we have, Stephanie, for a vote? What do you have? Because I, I'm confused.
I have three ayes, two noes. For having staff move forward with applying for an extension on this Carnegie Library grant.
The motion carries. Okay, new business, request for council action.
I think we haven't done with this. Do we need to set up a special meeting right now?
Well, I guess we can take that as, as, as we get to the end of our agenda. If we need to, if you want to talk to about a special meeting right now, I don't have a problem with that, if that's appropriate. Stephanie, is that okay to do that at this point in the agenda?
I would say so, because you're essentially tabling this item.
All right, so I'd entertain a motion that we set up a special meeting to discuss the City Hall building and the Carnegie Library building, since we ran out of time, just like we had at five-thirty today. And I would like to have that as soon as possible by legality, so if that's something that we can advertise tomorrow and have Friday. Is that?
Yeah, whoever works with you guys Thursday, Friday.
What are you thinking, like over a, you know, on a Friday, or are you thinking, I mean, people's schedule? Are you thinking in the morning, right away in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, or?
Is it something we could do in the morning?
Right, yeah, eight o'clock in the morning?
Make it nine. That way they've got time to get their office open.
Ah, that's true.
So, then moved, looking for a second. Special meeting for this Friday at nine AM. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none or in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Any other business with the, this grant that we need to address at this time, Stephanie? Due to timeframe, okay, all right. Everybody's good? Move on to new business, request for council action, and that's to the chamber. And let's see, Erica, you're still here, so if you'd like to put on a presentation here for us on what you're thinking. Mary Bright Parade.
This is going to be the shortest presentation ever, so note the dates. We're requesting exactly the same pretty much as last year, only on the parade route. The same exact Friday and Saturday schedule of last year as well, too. The date would, for the parade would be Friday, December fifth, line up at five, parade at five-thirty. The only, and it would be, you know, two block, is that two blocks? Yes, two blocks. Kind of at the Liberty Pond and Hot Spot Corner, with the lineup being north of that, and then turning turning, traveling east to, to start the parade route. And then when you get up to the Hiawatha Avenue corner, then you turn south, just like we do for Water Tower. The only difference is last year, we kind of brought it in front of the tank. This year, we just say the end of where people could line up would be right at that corner there of what is that, Third Street Southwest and Hiawatha Avenue, so then people could choose whatever direction they wanted to leave. But that's the only change, same time, same location, same assistance with Public Works. We have discussed it with Public Works, they're supportive of it, and the fire department has volunteered to chauffeur Santa through the parade. As far as Saturday, it worked really well out here. The only difference with that would be if we, now that, which is a good problem to have, now that there are more tenants in the building, we would then request to have the bookshop either be in here, if, if the other areas could be closed off. You know, or in that last room, but I think we could have everyone in here or we could split them up by age. It works better if they're split up by age and that one room is not big enough for all of the kids to go in and get books. So we put in both, but we could, I could see either one working, so. And there would just be the use of that, and then if we could have some time on the evening before to, to be able to decorate out here, so.
Okay.
That's it.
And that's something you could coordinate with city staff?
Yes, yep, just like last year.
All right, and so then also combine that with your Santa visit.
Yes, that would be, that's what I was discussing.
It's all combined.
Yep.
So the Mary and Bright Parade request and the Santa visit, entertain a motion for approval. Moved and seconded, any questions, discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Well, thank you. Okay, request for council action, and that's Jeff and Nancy Terry. And they have made a written request for financial relief from their sewer bill. The Terrys moved into Pipestone in July and put new sod down on their property, which led to high water usage. Not knowing that the sewer charges are based on the water usage, they were surprised by their sewage bill and requested some relief from their sewage usage bill due to the water not actually going down the sanitary sewer system. This situation is unique in the fact that the Terrys are new property owners in Pipestone and do not have prior utility bills to look back at to see what their average water usage is. The Terry's request does not ask for a specific amount to be relieved, simply states an amount of credit towards their bill for the months of August and September, which is, would be appreciated. Please note, this may set a precedence, precedence, and if the council chooses to relieve any of the sewage costs, the city treasurer is recommending that Terrys pay no less than one hundred dollars per month toward their sewer charge for the months of August and September. And where is she coming up with that number? I guess that's a question I have.
I think that was based off of sewage base fee and then approximate number of gallons a household would use.
Okay, well, yeah, just what I read was their first water bill, their sewage bill was sixty-some-odd dollars.
And they weren't, I don't believe they were in the house.
They weren't there the whole month. So then I thought, well, let's look at some comparisons. And I, two people in a, in a house, well, that's the same thing that I've got. And I looked at mine, and right about eighty-five dollars is about an average. And I'm thinking that would be reasonable to charge them eighty-five dollars for the month of August and September, but that's just my opinion. And I, I'm taking into account that they're new to town and didn't have a chance to understand how the billing process works, because if they would have known that, they could have requested a meter and used that water without a sewer charge. Because we'd still be paying for the water usage, or just running that sewer charge down to what it probably would, it should have been.
So you're saying bill at eighty-five dollars for the sewer charge?
For those two months each, August and September.
What was their bill? Was it way?
It was like two hundred and some odd dollars.
Just a sewer.
Just a sewer. Yeah, if, there's a copy in here. We can find it. And her letter.
So their sewer charges went from sixty dollars and thirty-three cents in July to two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents in August and two hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-three cents in September.
I think then we have an issue with the country club having an issue or something that went down too. They used water out in the front for some landscaping project or something. And I then, I don't remember if we forgave them that.
I don't remember that one, Roger, but I do remember a landlord that had remodeled the home and then sotted his lawn. And then he had come in a few months later and requested a reduction, and I, and I don't remember what we decided to do on that. That was about three or four years ago.
I think it's only fair to, to, I, I agree with Dan on the eighty-five dollars. Just for the reason the water did not go down the sewer, and I, I don't think they really should be charged for it. You know, it's after the fact, and they probably should have, you know, addressed this before. The city didn't incur the cost, the water going down the sewer to be treated, so.
Yeah, and, and I, I think we actually have, there, the precedence was too, didn't Minnesota West have an issue like this too at one time or something too? Yeah, but occasionally, you know, people end up with a water break and it doesn't end up in the sewer system and, and we've made adjustments, though. It, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me, but it's, it's just, it, it's an average guesstimate, I should say, on that eighty-five dollars, so.
I'll make a motion to charge them at the eighty-five dollars for the month of August and September. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, any other questions, comments? Hearing none or in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-seven, this resolution accepts the following donations. And William A. Winter, contractor, donated three hundred dollars to the Lights at the Lodge event. Charles and Dory Sandelback donated five hundred dollars to the Lights at the Lodge event. Pipestone Realty LLC donated one hundred dollars to Lights at the Lodge event. Greg's Welding Inc. donated one hundred dollars to Lights at the Lodge. Winter Title and Abstract Companies donated five hundred dollars to Lights at the Lodge. Pepsi-Cola Bottling Company donated one hundred dollars, Lights at the Lodge. A and S Drug LLC donated one hundred dollars to Lights at the Lodge. O'Neil O'Neill and Burdusen donated one hundred dollars to Lights at the Lodge. And Darbo Foods of Pipestone donated two hundred dollars for Lights at the Lodge event. Along with these donations, the Brownstone Book Fund donated one hundred books valued at one thousand dollars to encourage reading. And that would be to the Pipestone City Library, the Minders Library. So it entertained a motion to accept these donations as presented. Moved and seconded, any other questions, comments? Hearing none or in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries, and thank you for those generous donations. Resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-eight. This is a resolution adopting the assessment role for the twenty twenty-three street and utility improvement project. On October twentieth, a public hearing was held on the proposed assessments. Following the public hearing, the city's engineer and the staff followed up with property owners. Changes to their assessments were warranted. Full assessment role is included in the council's pack. The total of the assessments is one million, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents. The total cost will be assessed into the property owner's taxes for a period of ten years at five percent interest. So that's the resolution, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any questions, comments?
Yeah, I got questions.
Yes, Roger.
Full assessment role is included in the council's packet, the total, okay, the total of the assessments were. I just, I had read that wrong first, so, okay.
And, and then, you know, from the hearing, we, we had some people that had specific questions about the what their assessment was, according to whether the lot was buildable or not, and it was additional lot. And just, did Travis or Stephanie, can you comment? Were we able to take care of those issues that came up? You know, all in all, I think everyone that had a concern, that was addressed.
We addressed everybody that, that let us know of, that they wanted it reviewed.
And those, and changes were made in favor of the citizen?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there were some properties that we didn't feel warranted changes, but there were there were several that did too, and we did reach out to those property owners and let them know.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Adopt a sanitary sewer loan program assessments, and this resolution authorizes the assessments of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-two cents for twenty-six new private sewer lines. This year, twenty-six property owners took advantage of the zero percent interest sanitary sewer loan program to update their private sewer services. Total cost will be assessed into the property owner's taxes for a period of seven years at zero percent interest. And, and that is a program that's, that's one of those win-win things, that's, I know that's a cliche, but it's good for the property owner and it's good for the city, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the sanitary sewer loan program.
I second that.
Moved and seconded, any questions, comments? Hearing none or in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Authorizing a change in bank signers at First State Bank Southwest and First Farmers and Merchants Bank. Personnel changes, a motion needs to be made to formally remove Deb Nelson as our authorized signer and user for all First State Bank Southwest and First Farmers and Merchants bank accounts, and add Stephanie LeBrun as a signer and user for all city bank and investment accounts. Entertain a motion.
I so move.
Moved and seconded, any questions, concern, comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Consider appointment to Community Improvement Commission, and Dave Rambo has graciously applied and was willing to serve in the Community Improvements Commission. And this motion would confirm his appointment as, that I've, I've recommending at this time.
So move, second that.
So moved and seconded, any questions?
I, I would just like these people to come in so we could meet them. Uh, I would just like these people to come in so we could meet them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, uh, if you haven't met Dave, uh, I'm sure he'll be stopping in occasionally. And I'll introduce you to him, uh, he's been around for quite some time, and then he had left the Pipestone area. He recently moved back, he's a homeowner here in town. He at one time, um, was the coordinator or the curator of the museum and, uh, has been involved very heavily with, uh, events in Pipestone and notably the Civil War event that we had in Pipestone, he was really involved with that, so, um.
But I.
He sounds like, yeah, and I understand.
People that.
Yeah.
Apply for these, they just come in and meet the council.
Yeah, okay, good to hear, alright. Any other questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Approve Mike Blumendahl's performance evaluation. In the summary, uh, Mike Blumendahl's annual evaluation was held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. In closed session at the Pipestone City Council Meeting, Mayor Dan Delaney and council members Roger Schmidt, Scott Swanson, Verdean Colbeck, and Daniel Thompson unanimously agreed that the evaluation of Mike's performance is satisfactory and warrants a step increase effective July one, twenty twenty-five. The basis for the satisfactory evaluation was due to the following findings. Um, Michael Blumendahl has the great organizational skills with all the departments he manages. He has great personality and is compassionate to customers. He does a great job addressing public concerns and keeping up with public demands. He also makes decisions in the best interests of the city. And Mike Blumendahl's goals are to be more efficient by making plans to update equipment and office programs. So entertain a motion to approve that satisfactory evaluation.
I'll move it.
Second.
Excuse me, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, or is there any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Approve Jody Whacker's performance evaluation summary. And Jody Whacker's annual evaluation was also held on October twentieth, twenty-five in a closed session at Pipestone City Council Meeting. Mayor Dan Delaney and council members Roger Schmidt, Scott Swanson, Verdean Colbeck, and Daniel Thompson unanimously agreed that the evaluation of Jody's performance is satisfactory and warrants a step increase effective January one, twenty twenty-five. The basis of the satisfactory evaluation was due to the following findings. She's done an excellent job with the transition and development of the new library, and we know that was not an easy process. She has a contagious and welcoming personality. She does a great job obtaining grants and funding to provide unique programs for all of the library patrons. She is proactive and has worked hard to collaborate with other local organizations to provide programming opportunities outside of the library. She is fiscally responsible and makes decisions in the best interests of the city. Her goals are to increase the library's reach to middle school and high school students, create an outdoor green space, and add more ADA signs in the library. I'd entertain a motion to approve that satisfactory evaluation.
So moved, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any comments, question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Consider amendment to the personnel policy, and due to the new Minnesota paid family medical leave law, new language needs to be added to the personnel policy. The new language is included in the council packet, and additionally, a request was made to the Personnel Committee from staff to change the hours of operation at City Hall from eight AM, five PM to eight AM, four thirty PM. With this change, staff at City Hall would receive a half-hour lunch period rather than a one-hour lunch period. The Personnel Committee is recommending the council approve the changes in working hours. And this is something that, uh, Scott and I had, uh, talked about as a personnel meeting and, uh, Stephanie, and the recommendation is that, uh, that's not an unreasonable request and, uh, that shouldn't, uh, change how business works here at City Hall, uh, that greatly, so. And then also, we were obligated by statute to change the family medical leave policies. So entertain a motion for the approval on that personnel policy. Stephanie, is there anything you'd like to add, or did I cover it?
I think you covered it pretty well.
Okay, alright.
And you'll still be open through the noon hour for anybody that comes during the noon hour. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the personnel policy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and motion carries. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-nine, this resolution will authorize the consent to the pro forma asset transfer to franchise Clarity Telecom LLC and Blue Peak Subsidiary, who currently holds a cable television franchise agreement with the city. The Blue Peak Subsidiary will assume all duties, rights, and responsibilities pertaining to the operation of the cable television system pursuant to the franchise granted by the city, which will continue unchanged in full force and effect. The city's franchise attorney, Brian Brogan, with Matt Moss and Varnett, drafted this resolution and is recommending council approval. So, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, and this franchise that we have with Blue Peak, Stephanie, how long has that gone? That goes several years, doesn't it?
Um, it runs, I think, there.
Ten.
Steve says ten.
Ten years, okay, thank you, Steve. And you know what year we're on right now?
Oh, I don't.
Okay, I, I think it was renewed probably within the last two or three years, but I would guess, but there's probably quite a bit of time left on it. And this isn't something that's uncommon, is it? I mean, these companies change hands occasionally and you have to update the franchises, so. Okay, entertain a motion for approval. Oh, we got that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries, thank you. Closing comments. Say ten, I'm wore out. That's my comment.
Seconded.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, so moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries. Thank you.